Okay, so just a reminder for everybody to please silence your cell phones. We've got a contribution by one of our citizens. It's a little jar up there with a slot in the top. So if the phone goes off, we're going to start collecting funds for the Sarah Maude Mason Boardwalk Fund. I'd also like to remind everybody to please be courteous to your fellow citizens. When they're speaking, please keep your comments to yourselves until it is your time to speak. We want to make sure that we are respectful of everyone. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the consideration and approval to execute the progressive inspection agreement. That was, we tabled it last meeting on the 14th because we had a typo in it and councilors needed additional time to review and ingest the information. So...
So move. Second thing.
Okay. So discussion?
Yes, like I brought up in the last meeting, there, I know we put a RFP out when Mayor Nevel was the mayor, and we were looking at bringing in other contracts. I know Alpha gave me one. I think Councilman Conroy stated he got one from another company. And I was wondering how we veered away from that and not opening up just to look at other contracts, to look at other opportunities, especially with the complaints we got from builders and residents. And we had that one meeting where they stood up and spoke about some of their concerns. So I wanted to first ask whatever happened to that. Would it hurt to entertain it?
The RFP was premature. We had already had an RFP with responses. The county withdrew from contention. They didn't want to participate when we met back. Alpha didn't provide a lot of information. And so we were working with Progressive. In fact, you were working with Progressive, with Ron Frankenstein.
For a while, yeah.
Right, for a while. And then that went over to the then-Mayor Nevel, who offered a 30-day extension to work through the kinks on the contract. So during the absence of Mayor Nevel at that time, I took on that responsibility, incorporated your notes, and moved forward with the selection, with the active participants of that RFP process at that time.
Okay.
And so I know that you had said that you were going to pass on any emails, et cetera, complaints to Mr. Ernest so that he could address those, because now building inspection is under Public Services.
Yeah. And also Mr. Ron Frankenstein, because I made accusations that he made some statements, and I offered to give him a copy of those. And he never came to see me or sent me an email, text message, phone call to see.
Did you send them to Mr. Ernest?
No, Mr. Ron Frankenstein wanted them. I'll send them to Mr. Ernest.
Yeah, in fact, that was my understanding, was that you were going to send everything to Mr. Ernest for review and discussion, and for Mr. Ernest to address them, Frankenstein.
And also, I remember I brought this up when the builders came up with their concerns with Mr. Ron Frankenstein. And I know a new house bill was passed this year, I think it was House Bill 7103. And what that does, it gives options to builders. If they're not happy with their services of the town building inspector, they can go outside.
Right.
And they're seriously entertaining that if we take on this contract. What would that do to us? We'd lose a lot of money coming into the town. And if they start the Talashay project, is that what Florida has, Talashay?
Yes, Florida.
Yeah. The town will lose substantial amount of money.
But Ernest would still come through our town.
He'd lose a lot of money, though. He'd lose a substantial amount of money. I think it was 75%. I don't want that to happen to us. It's a good amount of revenue coming in. So that was brought to my attention by the builders. So we should seriously look at that as well before we move forward, because we don't want them using someone else.
Well, my understanding from them was that we had certain items to address, making sure that the inspector was available during business hours, making sure that the process was automated as far as we could, that there weren't finals, sign-offs via text and that sort of thing. And I know that Mr. Ernest and Mr. Frankenstein have that list. I also know that those builders confirmed that they thought that he was an incredibly good inspector, and thought that the quality of the housing that we have here in Howie was primarily due to his management of the inspection process. And I think that that is something we don't want to lose, that we want to be known and continue to have that expertise on our staff or available to us. And that has actually always been the case, where if somebody doesn't want to work with our building inspector, they can go elsewhere. That has always been the case. So I do know of a couple of instances of that.
And they did mention that, as they spoke about their concerns, and they did compliment on that. I think the concerns outweighed that. Yes, they did say that, but there were more concerns, and other than we're assured that he's keeping an eye on the building and making sure they follow the codes and they're built well. But there's a lot more complaints than compliments. But once again, I just want to bring that to your attention. It should be taken into consideration when we vote, as well as the outside opportunity of inspectors coming in, us losing the money.
This is also an annual contract. So if we do validate that this year, we have the opportunity to review it and make a decision with the time.
And I think there's a clause in there as well, that we can actually opt out of it halfway through the contract based on certain criteria.
I believe it's, isn't it, Heather, 60 days?
Sixty days.
So it's not even halfway through the contract, it's just a mutual...
Yeah.
Well, you have a contract yet, so you can't count the days.
No, no.
That's exactly right.
And the other concern I had was obviously the reinspection fees. And when I was meeting with them, it was 100% to him and 0% to us. I recommended 50/50. I think when I last left him, it was 60/40. And I think it's...
80/20.
80/20 him. So I just thought it should even out to 50/50.
Well, as we discussed last time with the 80/20, I looked at the scope of the work for the re-inspections and what was entailed. And I do believe that the 80/20 is appropriate to the effort that's put in.
Guy's covered pretty much everything. My thoughts is that we've had many years of successful inspecting with Mr., with Ron. No one argues how knowledgeable he is about the codes. Matter of fact, his knowledge sometimes means he knows them better than the builders. And I really, when I selected vendors in my other lives, it was always when somebody could say, you end up, as one of the gentlemen said, Howie has better houses because of Mr. Ron Frankenstein. And I think, I don't know what better, maybe you can't have the foxes controlling the hen house. And while we do have good builders, and I guess many of the people who have recent homes could probably comment on the quality of their builders, but the last thing we want is any decline in the quality of building in Howie. So, and the fact he reports to Mr. Ernest. As far as the 80/20, as invented consultant, which basically Ron is, or any of our consultants are, is that, you know, you're buying your own car, you're paying your own insurance, you're about 50% in the hole in every dollar you make before you even start looking at other things. So, and in the years, in the years where we had no building, I think one year we had only one, Ron didn't receive any money, because there was no inspections, or there were very few inspections. I do not have the exact number. So if you look at his past history, that he had the zero years, and now the last couple of years have been pretty good, and the future's probably going to decline again until we have some other developments started. So I'm very much in favor of renewing our contract with Ron, because he's done a great job. He's not perfect, by the way.
As a human being.
As an inspector.
And I know that.
Any other comment?
Call the question.
You call for that?
Yes. Counselor Scott?
No.
Counselor McGill?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mayor from Tim Conroy?
Yes.
Counselor Nevel?
Yes. Good God, that's overwhelming. I want that new Cadillac with all the money.
Okay. So the next item is the Town Consumption Permit Corrective Action Plan. An update on that for the council?
Because of Mr. Ernest's deal, can we just go ahead and do all his stuff out of that?
We can. Mr. Ernest Public Services has to leave for some counseling. And so we would, it has been suggested that we talk about the cup, and then move down and look at the Public Services report, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Retail rate agreement?
Yes.
You may have comments on that?
Yes. Ms. Ernest, the corrective action plan, just that we're working on it, I guess?
We're working with that. Right now, instead of Whittaker, it will take us the entire year to get ready for next May, which it has to do with, we are, right now, we're using about 100,000, about a million gallons a week. That's most matter of work. This morning at 6 o'clock, we were running 600 gallons a minute. So last year, we over-our cup by 40 million gallons. This year, we're going to run over again. It's just a simple matter of...
Can you get closer to the microphone, Ms. Ernest?
You don't want me to get close.
Phones, everybody silence your phones.
Bring the money up here. The consumption use permit is what we call a cup. It's what I water from the St. John's EDP where we get, where we actually pay for it. We're using way over our budget right now. We can produce 256 million gallons a day, but we only have rights to build to 1,000,000, to 1,500,000. So right now, we're running way over that. We have to adjust it, and we will be doing that in the next few months. We're going to put out a leaflet to all of you, to the whole town, on how to water, how to irrigate, and how to save our water. All the towns are doing it, and we're no different. We have to do the same thing.
So I also know that you're going to give a presentation to the Garden and Civic Club at Monday's luncheon, so that we'll make that presentation available to all the citizens via the website as well.
That's true. We have a written program that we will pass out, and we may do the same thing at the library later if you'd like to.
Wonderful. Thank you.
John, quick question. Has this overage occurred since the new development come online?
Yes, but we were pretty much prepared for it. The last year, it ran over us. We put the well in for the purpose of the new development coming, what, seven or eight years ago? So all of us have been paying that $10 impact the entire time. But that well was put in for the new developments that came in. Building codes do not address the issue of how to use irrigation and how to protect water. They will in the future. It's our fault. We take that.
So one of the items in the corrective action plan, besides the pamphlet and the information, will be to expand our water usage ordinance?
Yes. We have one already that we have stolen from someone else, best way to put it. It fits quite well. It's actually St. John's water system. So we'll be sending it out for 14 months. Actually, first of all, we can't do anything personally with it.
Mr. Ernest, was our allowance, did our allowance go up for Venetia?
No.
With St. John's?
We got this five years ago.
So it's already set in place?
It's set in place. We have to renew the cup every five years, and 2022 is when we have to do it.
Do you think it will go up because of that now, or no?
Not necessarily. We have to control our usage.
Right, but I'm saying just because we have more people coming to the town, we have to...
Sure. If they understand that, I don't really see a problem with it. But that's part of it. We didn't anticipate this much usage.
The current cup does cover the population as it's outlined right now in Bieber. And so it currently says 1,456 or something like that, citizens. And we're not very far over that as far as our population goes. So the new cup, as Mr. Ernest was saying, will include an estimate for growth if Talashay and the other two developments do come online.
It sounds like a terrible number when you say 40 million gallons over, but it's not a drop in the bucket of what we use and the other towns use. It just sounds awful.
And St. John's River Water Management District is also considering reducing the allocation per person.
Yes.
So even if our population goes up, if they move forward with this change in the gallons per person per day, our cup could stay the same. So we really have to look at that and work through that process.
And that's something we cannot control. That is a state mandate.
So, Ms. Ernest, the other thing, if you want to talk about, I want to skip to your report. It's item number 10 in the book. It's Alcatraz.
Sure. Our report for this month is we did at least eight items. We completed a replacement of 19 outdated fire hydrants in the town with a savings of $64,000 from the original contract. We painted all the hydrants in Venetia that are on bright red now. Installed 10 new water meters, five puddle, and five irrigation. We repaired, replaced five old curb stops. That means that on the main is a valve. The old valves in town were hand valves. They rusted away. We replace at least one a week because they break. We replaced the chlorine pump at Well Free. It doesn't mean anything to you, but it does on your drinking water. We've replaced a six-inch broken sewer line in Venetia. That was done months ago by a contractor. We have all the information on that. Well, removed one oak tree on South Lake Shore that fell in a truck. Out of the picture, you have the picture on your packet. Plus, we took down, I believe, five, yes, five eard trees, four eard trees, which were rotten in the core and pretty close to falling.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's the extent of what you need to be here for, unless you want to be here for Bishop's Gate later.
You want to do, Mr. K?
I don't think Ben is here yet.
Do you?
Oh, yes, Ben. Excellent. Can you come up, please?
Sure.
I apologize for all the skipping around, but I think we'll be okay. It's number four in the new business section.
Hey, I want a compare version of what we looked at on the 14th to what we have now, if that's helpful.
That's the lined version, so that we can see exactly what was changed.
You did a motion first?
Yeah.
So move to approve the race water agreement?
Second.
No, I'm sorry. Now we can discuss. This is the line item. The agreement was in the packet, but this is the item that identifies what was changed. So as we had discussed at the meeting on October 14th, we changed the agreement so that it removed ownership of the line along, is it County Road 48? County Road 48 between Bishop's Gate and where they're going to bore under the road to connect to the CDD. We had discussed the liability for the town, and as a council agreed that we did not want ownership of that line because it had no benefit in the future, none of the other developments, or the other development on Lake Hill would connect to it because it is too small, and we, excuse me, really didn't have any responsibility, and it was also on FDOT land. Excuse me. So we've gone forward with an agreement that takes out that ownership. And currently, in our, we don't have in our charter or in our ordinances, in our ordinances, any fee components for wastewater. And so the idea is to charge Bishop's Gate the same amount that we're currently charging any of our residents that are connected to the CDD.
And Mayor, if I may add, there is a statute that says that you will charge the same amount to a development or property owner that's outside of your town boundaries. And so I think if you wanted to entertain an idea of charging an amount that's less, since the statute is specific that you can only charge the same or more, that you would need to do a study and justify a lower rate for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm probably fine. I'll take this out. Ben, how many units would come on year one, year two, roughly?
We don't hold you to it. Yeah, sure. There's, we would, 84 units would come online, and in the agreement, it's going to be billed per ERU. So it'd be 84 units being billed from month one, ideally June of next year. And to the, really, I came this evening to discuss, really, that retail portion of that, because as Bishop's Gate, we're, it makes sense for us to build and own and maintain and repair the entire system. We're all in agreement with that. When the neighboring land opted a year and a half, two, whatever it was, to opt out of any potential pioneering or future connection, it became an independent system for Bishop's Gate. So really, the only future ERUs that will come online are within the Bishop's Gate community. I mean, up to 204, 205, so a significant number, but still just the ones in the community. And so we're great with "we" being the HOA. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bishop's Gate HOA when I say "we," because that's the party. We're fine with that. We're fine to own and maintain and repair the entire system. The idea came up, though, we are, as an HOA, respectful of the existence of retail rates as they function within municipalities, communities, others. With the change of taking the pipe from town ownership and responsibility to HOA ownership and responsibility, we are hoping to find a mechanism to take a portion of that retail rate and put it in some type of non-touchable escrow for maintenance and repairs of that line only. So, you know, high level, still paying the retail rate, no issue there, but it didn't make logical sense to pay the retail rate and not have, and just sort of have that money go away and not have something set aside, whether that's 20% of the difference between what the town pays for wholesale and retail. Whatever that number is, that wouldn't be, I don't think necessarily appropriate for discussion. I'm happy to. But that was the, that's the idea, is can we identify a mechanism where high level, we're paying the retail rate, same as everyone, we own, maintain, repair, but a portion of that retail, or a portion of that delta between wholesale and retail goes into a non-touchable escrow only for that line, only for from our property line to where it connects to Mission Inn, because everything internally to the community has from day one been Bishop's Gate responsibility. So that's really the only outstanding question in our mind. Everything else is...
So I, what does everybody think of that? So what we are saying is that they would pay the retail rate, but the town would then hold some monies, a portion of that money that they're paying in an account, and they would be able to draw on that for repair of that line if there were a break or an issue with it. And so we would have to determine what percentage is appropriate for that.
I think we discussed that about two years ago as well.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, a lot of things were discussed.
Well, I think it's the exact same scenario. What's changed, I think, is that they are responsible for 100, you know, John, and I'm speaking for John, but his biggest concern was, once we got that line from their property to the manhole in Mission Inn, that somehow we would be pulled into spending our time, our money, our resources. And so we negotiate the deal where they own that line now. And so basically, I'm, this is kind of like an ideal customer. There are no, there are no costs. It's just a revenue stream. And to the people in the audience, it's about 20, that's why I asked if we have 80, my math's right, we have 84 times $22 a month, it's about $22,000 a year revenue for help maintain our sewers.
Net revenue.
Net revenue, yeah. So, you know, it's not a bad deal. It's a good deal for Howie. It's just whether or not the complication, there's something to be fixed or not. And to your point, Ben, how big does that fund have to get? Let's say there are no issues for five years or 10 years.
The escrow account. Yeah, no, no. And the answer is, I don't know, but a couple of suggestions, mechanisms. Maybe it's in an escrow, an interest-bearing escrow account, where once it reaches 50 or 100 grand, the interest is going to be enough to handle any repairs that are going to come up. And then the capital just sits there until the line itself needs to be replaced in 50, 60, 70, however many years. So maybe we just treat the interest as repair and operation, and the base capital, what's ever been contributed for those decades, as a line replacement. Again, still owned and responsibility of the HOA, just with that agreed rate.
It's a sinking fund, basically.
Exactly. That's the term we were throwing around, yeah.
So, other, can you take that away? And do you have any precedents or any?
No, but I will create the contractual provision.
Thank you.
Is it? Yeah, this kicks the can again, Ben, is that?
Well, we're...
It's kind of hard to negotiate something and have legalese.
I don't know when your start date is. No, well, our start, our start date was two weeks ago from today. But I'm acknowledging on behalf of the HOA that that, the time from then to now has nothing to do with the town of Howie. Now, if we get this provision set and we're ready to go, done, moved over, moved on, we'll start the project.
If you have, if the council has parameters for me, we can agree to the agreement and perhaps ask for public comment on that. And then if you want to approve the agreement this evening, subject to me working out the language and the parameters with Ben and his attorney.
That's good.
And that would be, I would agree with that.
And if we just wanted to put up 100,000, up to $100,000? Ben, you just need to tell me how you want it to work.
I would, so if it's, I would propose a percentage of the town's net between wholesale and retail. That way, if you guys ever get wholesale pressured, I want, we as a, we want to remove any risk or any future compression of margins for you or anything like that. So a percentage of the difference between wholesale and retail, 20%, goes into an escrow or a sinking fund. The capital stays in there indefinitely until the line needs to be replaced, moved, whatever the case is. And any interest from that could be used for repairs and maintenance. And that seems pretty, would seem simple to me.
Okay, up to $100,000 for them?
I mean, the line, we're paying, the line itself from that manhole to the community today is costing us 220 grand. So I would say, I would say 200.
200? Okay. All right.
I like one other thing that makes me feel, John kind of said, what happens if we're the only ones there to help them? You know, kind of like a black, they call them a black swan, or what we don't know that we don't know is that they also could use that fund to pay the town to make a, to use our resource for some money. I can't even imagine what it would be. But that escrow fund would be available for us if we're the only ones that could help them, because they may have their own contractors, but somehow they can't get there. And you got 84 people sitting over there without sewers. And then John's forced to do something, a little provision that said that escrow account is to pay for repairs, et cetera, including any expenses of the town. And that way, that way, we go to sleep at night going, okay, we're getting, we're getting that fee every month, and we have maintained our no-risk policy, if you will.
I want some security. Public Service wants a security that, a year from now, if something fails, that line fails, that is a way to pay for it, other than out of our coffers.
Yeah.
Because in a year from now, you have $200,000.
Yep.
And I'd love it if we didn't have a cap on that capital amount, both for the sake
of the town, and then maybe the provision is when the line is replaced, if there's a couple hundred grand sitting over then, then the town can sort of scoop that, and then the whole process starts over.
Okay.
Type of thing.
So no cap, then?
It's still a win-win all the way around.
And we're, it's still a win-win all the way around.
Any other comments?
Tell you what that line would cost to replace in five years, I don't want to become a stockbroker.
Upsetting shares.
Is there any public comment on this?
Yes. Are you going to...
Can you take your name in directly?
My name is Vanessa Howard, and I live at 444 Blue Central Place in Howie Hills. And besides this escrow that you're asking us to take out of the money that we're supposed to get, are you yourself as an HOA going to have any funds whatsoever to help with that? Or is this the only amount of money that's going to be available for anything that happens to your system?
Good question. Under the agreement, we as an HOA are responsible for owning and maintaining and paying for everything within our community. That's been envisioned for ages, and we have, we have a service agreement in place, we have the finances to do so, we have that, this is only for this exterior, this external line.
Only for the external?
Yeah, 100, only for the external line.
But are you yourself as an HOA just...
Under this scenario, we wouldn't escrow anything additional for the external line. No. We would still handle it inside.
But you, but you have your own escrow for your system. Are you going to build up an escrow for your systems?
Yeah, just like, just like our roads or just like our pool or anything, it'll be another line item in those, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mayall?
Who's going to compute this amount every month, every quarter, every year? Is it going to be done by the public service director? Is every single contract you do going to have its unique little terms? And then you're going to have somebody? When you consider the audit report later, you may note some of the repeat findings in there related to the weakness of your finance and administrative staffs. This is just an example of the type of thing that usually falls on the finance and administrative staff. And if every single time somebody does something, you've got all sorts of unique little things written into the agreement, you've just complexed it up tremendously.
I'm fine with annually from our side. Heather? I can't see who it is, but there's a handout back there.
Cynthia Smith, 308 North Palm Avenue, Howie Hills.
Can, Ben, do you think we could get that? Thank you so much. Just going to enlist you right here.
Hi, I just, my name is Cynthia Smith, 308 North Palm Avenue, Howie Hills, Florida. I just wanted to know what the benefit would be of handling this situation any differently than you would handle a pool or any of the other areas in Mission, in your subdivision. So also what the benefit to the town would be to act as a bank? Does that sort of what it sounds like we're acting as?
So currently, thank you, currently we are, Bishop's Gate is in our 180 for the CDD. And so it's our responsibility to manage at least the administrative function, the billing function of the connection of Bishop's Gate to the CDD through the same mechanism that we currently use for all of our in-town residents, just because of the location that they're in that 180. It is a complexity that we hadn't discussed until today to manage that fund. The other option is to reduce the, the fee or increase depending on the appropriate take on the amount of effort that we're putting in and the amount of ownership and responsibility that Bishop's Gate has. We would have to then do some sort of a study to understand what the appropriate rate would be and allow Bishop's Gate to manage their own escrow, et cetera. So we, we have to make that decision, whether we're going to do a study to determine the appropriate rate or whether we're going to have a contract that includes some sort of an escrow value for it. And there is nothing that says that we can't start out with the escrow and then revise the agreement at a time such that we can do the study and turn the escrow back over. We would have to hire somebody. We would have to pay for it. Any other comments? So we have a motion in a second, but we have also decided that we are going to change the scope of the document at this point, or discussed, including the escrow value in the agreement. So what would you like to do?
Do we have the option to ring it back after we make the changes and recommendations?
We absolutely do.
I recommend we do that.
Table it down. We're sorry. Two weeks for meeting.
So we had a motion in a second to accept the agreement. So now we're going to vote to not accept the agreement.
Well, to table it?
No, we're, we already had a motion in a second to entertain. But we don't know, we don't have a figure. That's right. That's right. So we should vote to table.
I accept.
I don't think, he didn't make...
I didn't make nothing.
We have an open motion right now.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second discussion, it's on them to...
Yes, it is.
I move to table it. Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. So we're going to table this, we'll put it on the next agenda as soon as we figure out what...
Yeah, I think we'll be good to get it done next agenda and then just let me know, because I know that Monday is, I think, Veterans Day.
That's right.
Just let me know how that meeting works, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayall. Is Representative Sabatini still here? He left. Yes, thank you. We're back on the agenda now. Item number three was the, or is the discussion to create and establish a charter review committee. We did not determine how best to find people for that committee or for that board. And so, and we have, we also have to establish the board through resolution. So I have heard previously through other governments that they, each counselor goes out and solicits the participation of two or three candidates. I'd like ideas.
So I like the one that Heather passed out to us already.
It's very simple, Mayor.
Yeah, this kind of fits with, Matt, you've looked at stuff too, this kind of fits with other towns have done.
And that's actually within their charter too, that office.
Gives me a question I was, and it's open to, to discussion, is it five, five members or seven, seeing you want a bigger cross-section? But then how do you choose those other?
Thank you.
I, I just, would it be better to have like up to seven or leave it at five? Which I can live with either, I just thought maybe a few extra brains working on it.
Yeah, I think the more we can get, the better. Also, if you do a cross-section around town, not from just a certain section of town. So if we can section off town and get so many people from certain sections, we get them on the board, that'd be great. But if we allow each councilman, would you say recruit? Who is it?
If each council person would like to choose one person, and then maybe the council as a whole chooses two, which way we get applications? I, I don't, just to...
Yeah, yeah. Some things I read, I mean, I think if we all went out, got two applicants each, this way we have something to pick from, and then we can go from there rather than just bring one in.
They are, we do have... Right, we do have subdivisions within the town, but not all of the houses. For example, there's a section on the west side that isn't included in any subdivision, it's just there.
And if people would be able to volunteer, like any other committee, and then we bring in two names, and then everybody gets one, and then the last two would be voted at, very large.
Yeah, makes sense.
That's where you were going.
Yes, sir. I definitely, yeah, I definitely think we should move on it though. You know, we have elections coming up in 2020, and I know the townspeople want to vote for their mayor, so it's something we really, uh, move on since we have a strong mayor, town charter, and we're working under a weak town mayor rules with the state.
Exactly.
So.
Keep in mind, if you go to a strong mayor, well, that's for the committee of your side. One reason the, what, my reading was, council stays out of it until we approve whatever goes on, but you stay out of it because we're by beast political and theoretically the committee is going to be less political. So what, so we have a motion, I move that we proceed to amend, is that what we need to do here?
We can, it just can be a discussion item, and I can bring back a resolution if you like, based on what you just discussed. Or a council member can prepare the resolution, however you'd like to do it. And then you can talk about it at the next meeting and have, vote on it and have public comment on it.
I do believe, I believe that Darian started drafting a resolution for that. So I'll contact her when she gets back, and if not, then we'll look at something and then have you review it and find something.
Okay.
Or whatever you can recommend to move forward the fastest, because obviously the holidays are coming up. Not going to have as many meetings, so whatever we can do to get those applicants in and start this process the better.
On the first meeting of next month, it should be totally doable.
And then, yeah, we can choose the committee, maybe they have first meeting in January, but they can set an agenda. I'm thinking, you don't want these meetings over Christmas and Thanksgiving, but you can have everything together.
This is to get ready for the second meeting in January, basically.
Is there any calls to us other than just printing it up once they, we decide to change whatever we're going to?
Yes, there's quite a bit of fuss for, not for the charter review specifically, but for getting it on the ballot for voting, that, that's quite a large expense.
No, it's, if you actually, didn't I read your thing?
I believe it depends on whether you're going to go for a special election. Sometimes your supervisor of elections will allow you to use their general election ballot.
Okay.
And it just depends on what your supervisor of election says.
Okay. So we will confirm that.
It could be free if it's in the general election.
Maybe.
If it's, one estimate, another was $8,000 if you have a, your own special election.
Yeah, from what I read, it doesn't take too long once you get the committee together to come up with something. So if we start the process in January, even if we're allowed to have some kind of special election in May or June, this way, when November comes around, people have an opportunity, if it comes to that, as far as voting for a strong...
So you said you want a special election in May or June, or you want to wait till November when it can be on the ballot?
I'm saying if, what I've read, they've, they've gotten committees together and come to conclusion within a couple of months and have it ready to present to the county, they ask for a special election in May or June, to find out what that cost is, that varies.
Sure.
So it's something we want to research.
Also, you've seen, you've done some research, is that, do they charge per each one that we change? Or is it, oh, one section, like we...
Then that, if we change 10 things, do we get charged for 10? Or do we get charged for just one lump sum?
Those are good questions. I don't really know. That is research that needs to be done, so we understand. If they're, the charter really needs a good review.
Oh, I know it does.
It is 15 years old, and there are some things on it that are very antiquated and really need to be addressed. So I'm, I agree 100% with that. So this is far overdue, and let's just get it done.
My mind is for the next meeting, there'll be a resolution that we can vote on.
To establish the board.
Is there one meeting in November or two?
That's our, that's one of our next items.
When we move it further, should we all agree on five or seven?
I, I, yeah, so I, if we decide on it, once we bring our applicants, you know, we might, you know, we're going to present 10 people.
The ordinance has to be specific, though.
I would suggest you make your resolution specific, and you can, but you could also revise it at the next meeting and approve it at the next meeting too. If you decide you want to go a different route.
Is it a resolution or an ordinance?
You can do whatever you want to. I would suggest you do your resolution rather than advertising an ordinance.
Cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're good with that. And I will find out if Darian has drafted anything and what's available. If she hasn't, we'll try to draft something. So number five is the Lake County Sheriff Office audit of the Howie Police Department. The auditor is not here. I wanted to make sure that everybody had access to that audit, and if we would like it to be presented or gone through in detail, we have that option, I can call the officer, and he will come and, and present all of the findings to us. And I, I was quite pleased with the audit, there were a couple of findings, but at the end, he basically said, you know, I think you should go for accreditation. So I thought that was a fine endorsement of the...
Don't forget the...
He said that was the next step.
Don't forget the new facility was in there too.
Yes, the new facility was in there, the request was in there.
And you have a copy of that?
It was online.
Okay.
The audit is online. So it's in here as well.
Thanks.
So please take a look at that, it's, it's a, Derry, I thought it was quite a good audit. And please let me know if you'd like me to invite the officer to the next meeting, you know, when we are looking to invite him. Okay, number six, number is the November and December town council meeting dates. We have conflicts with the first one, it's Veterans Day on November 14, and we have been known to have a meeting on the Tuesday, it's 11? Sorry. Can't do anything without your phones these days, right? Should we skip it, or do we have enough to? Because the 11th is Veterans Day, and then the 25th is Thanksgiving week.
Every week, I think we have to have it. I think a good recommendation is to do that.
The Tuesday? So can everybody be here on November 12th, the Tuesday for the meeting?
I can.
Councilor Mead, will you be here?
I'm fine. Then we will move, thank you, into...
The, well, we have to just decide if we're going to have that one or not. So we decided, is that true? That we're going to have?
I'm fine with Tuesday. Can we wait to Tuesday to see how much business we get done at that meeting, to see at that point if we have to move to Thanksgiving?
We can.
Mayor, I will have a conflict and will not be able to send anybody else either. We have Wyndham Aaron, has to tour that way.
On Tuesday?
Sorry, yes.
No, it's Monday.
So what do we just, we currently have on Tuesday, we have the Bishop's, we decided we were going to look at the Bishop's Gate agreement?
We move it to the 18th, that way legal's there, everybody's there, and it's the one meeting of the month, because the following week is Thanksgiving. I mean, that's Monday, the 18th, I can't, can't do it on October 19th.
And do you have...
Would 19th work for me?
Does the 19th?
19th works for me.
Mayor, or Mr. Nebo, the 19th okay for you?
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to then change the schedule for November to a single meeting on November 18th.
19th.
19th.
Tuesday's the 19th.
Because you can't be here on that 18th.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so the 19th is a good date.
Don't forget that Bishop's Gate, as you expect, in two weeks.
Yeah. Yes, we'll make sure of that. He just said let, let us know, because I did tell him earlier that we were going to discuss the date and time. Now, do we want to, since we're here, looking at calendars, look at December as well? So the town council meeting would be the 9th, we get down the normal town council meeting, and then the second one is the 23rd.
We traditionally don't have the second one in December.
Second meeting in December? Okay.
No, so the first one is what?
The 9th.
The 9th, which shouldn't be in anybody's trail.
Right.
The 23rd is in the...
Okay, so we're going to go to a single meeting in December as well, on the 9th?
Which is a normal meeting anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the normally, we just plan to make it a bond, it needs to be, to get everything done, it needs to be. December 19th, that year, the year.
Right.
Normally, that except...
Okay, so we're going for the 19th of November and the 9th of December. Yes. Number seven is the discussion and approval to accept our financial audit. And, is she here? Oh, and so she has had a previous appointment and is going to get here as soon as she can. And she said probably between 6:45 and 7:00.
So just push it off until she gets here?
Yeah. We're juggling today.
Related to the audit.
So the town hall report. I'm going to discuss that because the only thing on the town hall report is the Christmas festival. And so when that time comes, I'll get up and talk. It's now.
It's here.
Frances O'Keefe Wagler, 409 West Central Avenue. The only thing on the town hall report is the Christmas festival, which is the Friday, December 13th and Saturday, December 14th. There will be more information about it in the Howie Tribune, so please open your Howie Tribune and read it. If you would like to be a crafter, a participant crafter, please fill out the form. Town Hall has the form. Thank you.
She's the one who brought the jock. Ain't that funny? She brought the jock.
Well, we should have a topic, we've been, we've been pretty busy, still are pretty busy, there's a lot of things. Just so y'all are aware, we had a slip and fall in front of the library over the weekend. They notified me late Sunday, so I had the officer take a report, unfortunately the pages I read left. So I will get that report finalized and I'll bring it over tomorrow so we can spend it to rent insurance, just in case.
Thank you. So there's no, we already heard from Mr. Ernest, the code enforcement is, we have not filled that position as of yet. So we're still looking for code enforcement. Carrie.
Are we getting the applications in right now? Do we advertise it?
We have advertised, it's out on the internet in a couple of locations. And I know we extended it to include the villages and that area as well, because we could get a retiree that was interested in the position, but we haven't had any applicants that have come through. They, I know that the responses were supposed to go to Darian and so we might hear more. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I was going to address or give you a status on the Venesia deannexation and then also address the First Amendment right memo that I gave, that I sent out. For the Venesia deannexation, we went ahead and confirmed that the qualified voters signed the petition. So the next step now is for the feasibility study to be done by the town, that has been started. We have, my partner, Tom Cloud, is handling this project for us. He is one of the best annexation, deannexation attorneys in the state of Florida, so he knows this stuff here. And one thing that I wanted to point out to everybody, I know there was, there have been some questions from Venesia folks about what happens if they deannex. And those things are all going to be addressed in feasibility study. So Tom Cloud has suggested, there was a statement that he prepared and said to you, Mayor, and I believe you sent it out, that you do not come up with or try to think about things that are going to happen in the future if the deannexation does occur, because we just don't have those facts right now. The facts will be addressed in the feasibility study, so it would kind of be guessing at this point to give them answers and to commit to anything for the town.
I'm sure it depends on the size of the town, but to give you an idea of the size of our town, how long does the study would take?
Oh, we, the study is, you are allowed to, up to six months in the statute, but we have requested that it be done within 60 days or so.
He's asking what the study incorporates, I'm sorry.
The feasibility of not having the property within the town anymore. So it's going to be done by a woman who Tom has worked with in the past. She's a planner and an attorney, and she's very good.
Now, I know you said a lot of residents have questions, this is something new, new to us, new to me at least. Is it possible for the residents to have questions, maybe Venesia people, to send them in somewhere? To the people doing the study? Maybe they, this way it's possible you can be answered in a report, who might make it.
Sure, I think the most appropriate time to answer the questions will be when the report is done, but if you do have questions, we can, I mean, we can send them to the lady that's going to be preparing the report, but I think it's, it should, the report should be addressing the core questions that they do have.
Okay.
Why am I paying to tell people how to leave my town and stop paying taxes? Makes no sense to me at all.
Unfortunately, it's a requirement of the statute. So, but that doesn't mean that if a resident has a question about what if they stay in the town or can we work on this, can we work on that, that, I mean, those are just all town issues that should still be addressed. You might have other questions on that?
No, I know the, Mr. Fran Wagler put a meeting together for the library and brought Carrie Baker in. I know he answered a lot of questions, so the people that couldn't make that. Carrie, I'm sure will make himself available. He's on the website, email or call him if you have any questions as far as your taxes and he was very informative during that meeting.
Okay.
Would that mean that they could revert to the county?
You have to come up to the mic, Mr. Lines, we can't hear you, sorry.
I believe this question was, would they revert to the county if the deannexation is successful, is that correct?
Yes.
And I believe that is what would happen, that it would.
That's correct. You're either in the county or out of the county. You're, yes, you're either in the town or out of the town, exactly.
No, you're not.
That's what I meant. Right. Okay, and then the memo that I prepared and we circulated was a compilation of a couple of folks at our firm. They did some research and we have a couple First Amendment rights attorneys that we talked to about the process that occurred at the last meeting. You have, and the mayor addressed this at the last meeting, a very strong form of government, mayor form of government in the charter. And the town's charter, it provides that the mayor has the power to establish the agenda for town council meetings, to call special meetings of the town council, to attend and preside at all meetings of the town council, to be the head of town government for all purposes, to be the official spokesperson of the town and to direct and supervise the administration. She is the boss of your employees and to investigate the condition of the town and the town's department and offices. She is your chief executive officer and maintains order at all regular and special meetings of the council. And in her absence, the mayor Potem, he is the one who maintains order at regular and special meetings. The mayor has decided as part of her process of setting up the agenda that she will establish the agenda by taking suggested agenda items from the council and there is no specific outline of this process anywhere. It's just that is the process that the mayor is using right now. There is no specific Supreme Court case which addresses when the free speech rights of elected officials in the context of open meeting law. There are some lower court cases that we looked at and all of the cases do agree and the judges did agree that the one thing that a presiding officer at a meeting cannot do is viewpoint, is discriminate on someone's viewpoint. So for instance, if you're having a discussion about, say, Ron Frankenstein's contract, which we did, you can't say to someone, okay, you're not allowed to speak against it. Well, I'll hear from everybody that wants to speak against it, but not allowed to hear the other side. So that's viewpoint discrimination. But there is the ability of the presiding officer to treat, they do have to treat all counselors similarly, but they do have the ability to preside at the meeting and maintain decorum and decide what is going to be discussed at the meeting that is pertinent to town business. So a couple of the things that I put in the memo that came from the case law that we reviewed were that the mayor, in this instance and in all other instances, the presiding officer, whoever you call them, in open meeting situations can require members of the town council to adhere to rules of decorum and define the discussions to the purpose of the meeting. The mayor can call a counselor out of order for being disruptive and not addressing agenda items. They can prevent a counselor from speaking repetitively on a subject. They can prevent badgering, interruptions and disregard for the rules of decorum. They can remind a counselor of a topic if he or she veers off of the topic and give a counselor another opportunity to address that topic if she chooses. Be proactive, actually, one of the things we suggest is that the mayor be proactive to stop angry emotions and disruptive actions, because that has the ability of higher, the end result of hijacking somebody else's ability to speak at a meeting. And in this instance, I know this council has used Robert's Rules of Order and those are widely regarded by many courts in the, across the United States. And I did get a couple of questions, specific questions on the memo. One being how the mayor is able to select the agenda items. And I think that in this instance, everything basically that this council does, and you can arguably say deals with town business. But you have to have a, an end goal about where you want to go to in a meeting. You need to have enough time to address specific items and the items need to be pertinent to the town council business, not like to the powers of the mayor to be administratively in charge of employees. And then so other questions were, how can I get called out of order at a meeting? And again, that's just because the mayor needs to keep the topics in line and she needs to keep the business moving forward. And then if the mayor refuses to put my items on the agenda for town business, in this instance, you have a very strong mayor form of government, like we discussed. And there's two options, you can change your charter or you can have somebody else run your town as the mayor. But along that line, the folks that I spoke with in my office who practice First Amendment rights and constitutional law said they listened to the recording of what happened last week and were in agreement that the meeting was run efficiently and to the best of the mayor's ability.
Okay, thanks Heather. When I got your memorandum here, I, before I got it, I actually gave you some case law and I never got a response to it. And like you said, there's a lot of case law out there throughout the country and a lot of case law in different states don't have what we have as far as the Florida sunshine law. So obviously, the rule is going to apply a little different there. So as far as you're saying that they thought the meeting was run properly, if you look at the items I was bringing up and it specifically says if you're talking about town business, like you just said, if there's an end game to it, you can't be stopped. And the topics I was talking about, had an end game and they were town business. And I was stopped. So if you, if your firm thought that was proper, I would love if they would, just put in writing and just state that, you know, you agreed on how that meeting was run and that me, particularly, my rights weren't violated. Like I said, I sent you the, not the passage of agenda items, but all my agenda items had something to do with town business. They have an end game, if they just address them and entertain them, we can move forward and they won't be brought up again. So. And one of the questions I asked you, you cited a lot of things from the charter, the ordinances and policies. And I sent you an email, that's one you didn't return to me. Which I, which is another issue I'm going to bring up as far as you're addressing other councilmen and mayors and emailing them and not emailing me back. As far as establishing the agenda, you said the mayor has determined that members of the town council should submit topics they wish to discuss at upcoming meetings. That's not written anywhere in the charter, that's not written anywhere in the ordinances. I'd like to know where you got that from. You're citing case law here, but it doesn't say anywhere in there that she can do that. Now, your quote goes, "In that case, the mayor determines during the meeting whether the topic is germane to town business." Once again, we got to be very careful there, because we can infringe on the councilman's right. We do represent our constituents, they do have concerns. And everything I've brought up is town business. So to call me out of order when I'm, when I, when I got the floor, we talk about Robert's rules, councilman's comments. And that's acceptable. Call me out of order when I'm talking about town business, that's unacceptable. And for you to, instead of addressing the problem, it seems like you're trying to cover up for wrongdoing. And I just wish you'd be a little more fair with it. Like I said, I've seen the emails back and forth. And not returning my emails is a clear sign to me that you're, you're, not playing favoritism, but taking care of someone more than others in the council.
Councilor, I have emailed you more than any counselor or the mayor and I have all the public records to show that.
Okay.
So respectfully, that is not correct and you did give me two cases. One was a 1966 Supreme Court case, which dealt with a House of Representative person who gave, I read all of these cases, who gave a interview before they were even seated on a phone to a reporter. And that reporter took the interview, gave it to the person who was going to seat the House of Representative person and that person did not, and this person was even, I mean, this was a very antiquated case, person did not get seated and sued.
Okay.
So it has nothing, I mean, the context is completely different. And when you look at First Amendment rights, you have to look at the actual context of the forum. You cannot just find cases.
I agree.
Respectfully, read all of your cases, the two cases that you sent.
Okay, well, I sent three. They did, the open mouth, open meeting case for Ohio that did fit. It specifically states there, an elected official, you have to treat his rights the same as the citizen. And they talk about the meeting. I sent that there, I actually, I wrote, I wrote not only the case law, but I put the sections in there, that state. So you're picking apart certain areas that might benefit the mayor. But you got to read the whole case and you don't. So, but with this, I asked you, where you got this from? And you don't.
And I answered the question. I said that comes from the powers that are derived from the mayor. Your charter is not a procedural manual. You have to have some powers derived.
Okay.
Such as the fact that the mayor is the boss of all employees in this town.
We're not employees, are we?
No, 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 I know that, but I'm just saying in the charter, it specifically says the mayor is the administrative head of all the employees in this town. So she oversees all the employees. So it's not a, it's not a procedural manual, how to do things, but she has to come up with the wage, her process.
Sure, and I agree to that, but when someone and a council member has an item, a talent item to bring up, town business, a report, whatever you want to call it, you're saying she can look at that town business and determine its business, but it's not germane enough to bring it up, but it's town business. So if you have people addressing issues to certain council members and they want to vote at the council meeting, you're saying the mayor can stop that councilman from bringing that up? No, they can't. They can't. No, they can't. They can't. So please, like you said, you didn't say anywhere in here, and I highlighted these areas where she can determine that. You pointed out the other areas where she can do it, the charter, ordinance. But you didn't put anywhere in there where she can do that.
I completely agree. That is the process the mayor has come up with.
Thank you. So she came up with it. There's no law on it. There's no, there's no process. Robert rules nothing. She decided on her own to come up with that process, correct? That's a problem. And again, it's sad that you don't see that's a problem as our attorney. I wish you'd start representing us all equally.
Councilor McGill.
Thank you.
Councilor McGill, if I don't agree with you?
I'm fine with that. You'll agree with me. But treat me the same.
Please, everybody.
And like I pointed out to you.
I think you've made your point.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Conrad.
I think they have my agenda, so all right.
Counselor McGill?
Yes, you know, Mayor, I got your email forwarded by Rebecca about the certain items. What I'm going to do is, I'm not going to talk about them. I'm just going to say that I want to talk about it. I'm going to give you the email and give you an opportunity to address it. I'll send you an email along with Heather and then we'll go from there. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, I just needed more information about the scope of what you were.
Yeah, and I got it today and it was like last minute.
Yeah, actually, yes, that was my issue. I had it in my drafts and had never sent send. And I apologize.
No problem. That's why I have no problem sending you the email. And then if we can address it between then and the next meeting, I'll be satisfied with that and we'll move on. We talked about the Strong Town Mayor Charter. And my concerns with it.
In the charter review process, all right.
The next thing is the Mayor Pro Tem and, you know, the town charter and ordinances and how it spells out the responsibilities and is it, I mean, I know I was told in the past, actually, when Mayor Nible became mayor, we're giving out the responsibilities. And one of the things I wanted to do was meet with the department heads, but I was told it was Mayor Pro Tem's responsibility. So would you address that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I sort of always found it ironic that the mayor wasn't the person meeting with the department heads since I'm responsible for the administration and they report to the mayor. The mayor me at this point. So I took copious notes and provided the information and still a lot of things fell through the grasp. So when I became interim mayor, I discussed with the department heads whether, what they thought about me retaining the department head meeting so that I could really understand and continue to have the information to manage the activities within the town. And so I think that ongoing, it would be hoove the town for me to continue to be at that meeting. I'm still taking copious notes that are shared with everyone. The previous mayor had a full-time job and I think that was one of the components of it being part of the Mayor Pro Tem function. When I became Mayor Pro Tem, I got a call from Mr. Nible, who I don't think wanted to do it anymore. And so that's why I thought it was a function of the Mayor Pro Tem seat.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure, I know Mr. Conway travels a lot, as I do, and it wasn't a fact that he couldn't attend, but there's traveling and that's why you're taking it over?
No.
Okay. We were talking about the raises back and forth with the councilmen. They thought about why councilmen got a certain amount and the Mayor Pro Tem. And that one of the main reasons was because they're obligated to meet with the department head. So it's an extra meeting, extra meetings throughout the month they have to.
That's a very good point.
So are we going to address that because he's not meeting with them anymore? Because that was the reason why they got a little extra more money?
It is probably a valid point.
I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
But I moved, I think if there's any cost to the, to the.
Charter review.
Charter review, which there should be because there may be.
There you go.
Some legal costs that I'm quite willing to have all councilmen turn in their paychecks.
Right. So if we come back at the next meeting, I'll put that on the list to look at the salaries and also understand if we can, we'll reach out to the supervisor of elections to understand the components of the expense that we may incur depending on how we handle the referendum for the charter.
Okay. Thank you. I mentioned on here the attorney contract. It's actually, a lot of the contracts within the town, Tom.
Company.
Tom, thank you. How often do we put that out for a, for bid or how often do we address that? I know they're yearly contracts. I know Heather's contract, she gave me hers at the beginning of the year when I asked for it. I think that was drawn up in 2008.
It's very old. We serve with the pleasure, I serve with the pleasure of the council for great opportunities.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know a lot of councils address these contracts, so, you know, contractors outside. And as far as I've been here, I haven't heard anything as far as putting the RFPs out for Tom or whoever.
Right. I do not believe that we do the RFPs as regularly, but I do believe that we do a bi-annual, every other year, review of the contracts to confirm the necessity that the, all of the skill sets are available. That the contractor wants to continue serving the town. So I will contact Darian or when she comes back in, we'll look at the calendar and see when those last reviews were.
Yeah, I know this was brought up at the beginning of the year when I got Heather's contract and other contracts. And I thought it was important just to show the people that we're not just sticking with the same company and not revisiting their contract or looking at other options. And, you know, it's also important with this latest budget we had, we're raising our budget $108,000. And with the latest audit report and the way we got, we got scolded in that report as far as the way we handle town business, I just thought it was important to start, start looking up different contracts throughout, from Heather on over. So maybe something we can address. I mean, last year, I think they brought up, or the year before, they brought up towards the end of the year.
Yes, actually, it was, it was Mayor Sears at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Talked about the review of the contract and the continuation of it, the skill sets, the knowledge of the town. There were several things to look at, including the price and the cost, excuse me.
Yeah, so it's hopefully, like you said, I'm bringing it up. I don't want to keep bringing it up. Can we address this or can you address this?
Yeah, like I said, I'm going to talk to Darian about the review of the town contracts, see when the last reviews work.
And you can let, okay, rather than me bringing it up?
Yeah, I'll just hand it to the, 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 for November 19th.
Okay. The, I put the golf carts on there. About state laws and Heather sent me an email asking to get a little more specific on it. And once again, there's some complaints in Venezi about being stopped by a female officer. And one of the complaints was they were stopped because they had kids in their golf cart. And the officer said, I don't think this is legal. So he might not want to do it and went on away. And after that happened, I guess it got around the community. They were concerned that that occurred. So I believe one of the residents met or talked with Chief Thomas about it. And I think there's a misunderstanding in the laws because I believe the resident was told, in order to operate a golf cart, you have to have a driver's license or at least be old enough to have a driver's license. And that's not true.
Right.
So they were told that.
Can, do you have some details on that for Chief Thomas?
I do. First off, I never spoke to nobody in Venezi about the golf cart.
Perry Davis?
Never talked to Perry Davis, if I recall. Oh, he talked to me about exiting out the back. Had nothing to do with this complaint.
Yeah, that was an exit of the case.
That's number one. Number two, the officer didn't stop the individual. They encountered them at the park and the young lady was holding an infant on her lap. The officer didn't feel that was appropriate. The young lady and her other children, another female, left and then they went back where they were came from. Number two, the officer didn't know they were from Venezi until after the conversation. So we're not targeting Venezi residents. I resent that statement.
I didn't say targeting. I didn't say targeting.
So we did some more investigation. Chief Thomas, you had the.
Yes, Kurt, I'm sorry. There are quite a few statutes that apply to golf carts. You can read one. There's multiple. You have to crisscross between several. Mr. McGill is right. It does not require a driver's license, providing the town has been 316, 212, I think the statute is, which means if you recall, a park-friendly community, that a driver's license is exempt. That's correct. The problem we have, if you read our ordinance, our ordinance is way out of whack. It doesn't match the state law now. We need to go back and revamp the ordinance. There are several inconsistencies on the ordinance.
Okay.
So my recommendation is we need to go back, review the ordinance to match the laws.
Look at the current state statutes.
Correct. And I have done quite a bit of research on this today. We actually interviewed Ms. Ramos. We did find a new, well, a newer Attorney General's opinion on regarding golf carts and child restraints and et cetera. Unfortunately, I didn't get to read that 100% before I came.
I haven't read any of it either.
Okay.
So if it's okay with you, we can have time to read this and.
Yes, absolutely. And come back with some sort of a recommendation for the revision of the ordinance so that our ordinance matches the state statutes.
Okay. I appreciate that because, and then obviously there's a disagreement that he didn't talk to Perry. So I'm going to have Perry Davis, if it's okay, contact you and say exactly what was said between them.
Perry Davis did talk to us about being able to egress through the back with the golf carts.
I'm just saying, he, concern came to me that he also said the kids or young adults could be on it and you had to have a driver's license and.
But I don't think Chief Thomas has included in that.
Once again, that's something he said. I'll have him contact you just to confirm it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so.
I'll just refresh one thing. In Mr. McGill's original email, he says targeting. We are not targeting the residents of Venezi. I would like to make that clear.
That clarification.
Okay.
State law intention.
Yes. After the last.
Mr. McGill, would you accept a comment?
What's that?
Would you accept a comment?
I always do.
I'm trying to be.
Anytime during my, for the record, anytime during my council meeting.
Maybe to the, to the town itself.
You can speak.
I think it'd be, a lot of times, somebody brings a councilman a problem, they should be encouraged to talk to the department head or the mayor because they don't operate under sunshine. And then when it always comes up through a counselor, it seems like it, it's not as authentic as, you know, somebody told me, because I have people tell me stuff all the time, and you have to say, well, if you really feel strongly about it, then you should really go to the mayor. Because we do, you know, the sunshine kind of cripples us in terms of transmitting, you can't talk to the mayor per se without a meeting anyway. So my point is that we should encourage if our constituents have an issue, they should be willing to put their name on it, write it down, and then, then we have something written from a constituent rather than, and the concert can be copied on it. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to restrain anything, but it just opens up the communication, in my opinion, much better than simply always passing something through a council. Because that's the first thing I ask somebody. Well, have you talked to the mayor? Have you talked to the chief? And then, and the only problem you ever get burned is they drop, somebody drops the ball. I'm not seeing you golf football, but I, just a comment.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And it's, I just don't want to discourage residents from approaching any of us because we should all be available to them to answer their questions.
Yes.
No.
Only that they really have a concern, they should arrive to get to the correct person.
Sure.
The way our town runs.
They approach any of us and they might feel more comfortable with one than the other. And they might feel comfortable approaching one of us rather than a department head because they might not want retaliation or, and they might want to remain anonymous. You know, it'd always be nice to have some.
I don't like anonymous myself.
Oh, and so do I.
I don't think you do either.
No.
I know you don't.
Yeah, so, but we should, people have that right though. So, but even if they do report it to us, we can always forward it to Mayor McFarland and just obviously do not reply to the email like we always do at the recommendation of our attorney, so.
Yes, and the more information, the better. So that, these are lessons learned, right? So when we have a resident who has an issue, we do due diligence, look up the state statutes, look up the conflict in the ordinances and do documentation. If we have that and we have that documentation, in the future, if the same thing happens, we are then able to draw on that knowledge and not redo everything every time. So that is key to our success. Being as small as we are and as limited on staff and resources, it's very key for us to make sure that we maintain that sort of documentation in line of responsibility, information logic.
And with the golf carts, I guess Darian's still working on waiting for a response, so.
Yes, the FDOT has not gotten back to us on the variance yet.
I emailed the guy. I kept his number just to get it. And he said they're still working on it. And so I figured.
We're shooting for the Christmas.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can you get the ordinance text, Bill? Do you mind, do you mind if I speak on this?
What? No, he said.
My biggest thing with this whole thing is, I don't know what was said, what wasn't said, but when you have an officer thinking they know the law instead of knowing the law, that's a problem. If you don't say something to somebody unless you know the law, because that's just going to get you in trouble.
Right.
I don't know who it was. I don't care who it was. I said it's a chief to handle and take care of. But it's not a fact of, I think, you know.
That is, again, a very good point, that the chief will be able to take back not only to that officer, but all of his staff. So it's a very good point.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. I've brought this up the last couple of meetings. And to save time for me bringing it up, and it's about the chief's 11 offenses. If you are investigating and you are addressing them, maybe you can, once something's done, you can update the council via email. There's nothing wrong with that. I think we should all, we're all entitled to be informed and keep up to date on what's going on. This would also keep on coming here and asking you, what's the latest and what's going on and so.
I am addressing them. The audit was one component of that. And my objective is to put these to rest. As the, many of them were administrative and I addressed them. And so the last couple that I have will be reported on. Some of them are not appropriate to come back and be reported on because they are administrative functions of the town, deal with confidentiality of information and personnel in our personnel policies.
So how does that the council members find out as far as what's going on, as far as? I'd like to pose that to Heather, as far as, are we entitled to know what's going on? As far as the investigator, what's going on and information?
I would think we need to wait and see what the mayor, what the mayor does. And I don't know the answer to the question because I don't know what the result is.
Okay, I'm just, the question is, are we entitled to be informed where we're at as far as the offenses, the investigation, if there's any dispositions? I sent you an email. I never got a response.
Because I didn't have an answer.
Okay, a simple email saying I don't have an answer for it. And I think, like I said, I'm the one to type them up. And there are certain people that, victims, witnesses, whatever, haven't been interviewed. And they're even asking, is it going on? We have been interviewed. You know, when you conduct an investigation, if you look at the email, the Deborah, is it LaFour?
LaFour.
Um, she sent, saying what she would estimate if she investigated it. Anywhere from $5,000 to $9,000 it would cost the town for that law firm, Debbie, whoever, to investigate it. And because you have to interview people, you have to take statements, so.
So I am looking at them all. I have put several of them to bed. They were administrative functions and dealt with the personnel directly. There are a couple that I'm still working on and I will, that are appropriate to report back on and I will make sure that that happens.
Okay. Like I said, I figure I make a recommendation with the emails. I don't, like I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with letting us know what's going on. And then the other thing was the George Brown on May 7th. You said, you acknowledged that you got the, the four sheets, forms, summertime sheets, form of vacation sheets, whatever.
Right. So at that point, the instruction from the mayor was that the police handle their comp time internally. And so they, they have comp time for when they go to the courthouse, et cetera. So there's many of those. And so the complex that you reported, we went back and looked at the time sheets. And at that time, I talked to Officer Roman was the one, is that correct? He was, he was keeping track of the comp time in a, it was official, but it was not documented well. I don't know exactly how to say that. He knew exactly what the comp time was, but it wasn't reflected on the time sheets as comp time in some places. Sometimes we knew they had four hours of comp time and so they worked five hours and recorded nine. And so that is something that the. And so that is something that the chief and I have talked about rectifying, so that comp time is identified as comp time, not only in the log where they have the running total of it, but so when they're, they fill out their time sheets, it specifically says hours worked, comp time, so that we know the differentiation between the two.
Yeah, I want to put this to bed, so let's, I just want to make it clear, the four time sheets, the one, I know the four, the one time sheet they submitted, which was being, we've been criticized by the auditors, that they had to put the times exactly that they worked, and they only put eight hours or 12 hours.
That is, that is actually a, an audit finding, right? We actually have to change all of our time sheets to do that, because.